Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you and welcome to the Monday, May 19th meeting of the Attleboro School Committee. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. Each year, the administration does its best to the delight of the committee to highlight activities and important work that's happening across the district and all schools. And so tonight is very special for two reasons. One, obviously, we are celebrating the largest, the flagship school of the district, but we're also celebrating the work that happens in all of the schools all at once. So to begin our senior spotlight for the class of 2025, I will turn it over to Principal Campbell.
Thank you Chairman Gaddis. It is with great pleasure I get to welcome you here into our beautiful Bray auditorium. Tonight, we celebrate some pretty amazing Attleboro High School seniors. There are many talented, creative, intelligent, and thoughtful humans walking our halls, but tonight, it's about spotlighting a few special seniors. Tonight is also about acknowledging some of the important individuals who helped our students become who they are today. Small gestures, kind words, reassurance when life in school got hard, positive vibes when needed, yet accountability and structure when that was needed were some of the reasons our teachers stood out to these seniors. These teachers tonight are being celebrated for continuing to aspire while creating an environment where risks can be taken while growth, challenges, and dreams live cohesively. Tonight's students will welcome teachers on stage whom they feel had an impact in shaping them as learners and as individuals. Teachers, when you come up tonight, you will receive an acknowledgement from the Attleboro Public School Committee along with a puzzle piece made by our welding students. Yes, it's a piece of metal, but we want you to put it somewhere as a reminder of tonight. When you look at it, please think of the feeling and words shared with you and for having such an impact on your students. We see a puzzle piece representing a small portion of a great big beautiful picture instilled by our mentors and experiences. Each piece is a story, part of a larger artwork we call life. Sometimes, it just takes the right eye to find that last piece where it all becomes crystal clear. Sometimes, it was our teachers who helped truly make these puzzle pieces fit. Carry your puzzle piece as a reminder of how you guided life and learning to fall into place for the seniors here today. Chairman Gaddis, if you would like to be reading what you'll be presenting to the students and the staff tonight when they're recognized before we begin?
So we will have two certificates. For the students, the certificate reads, "The Attleboro School Committee hereby commends," student name, "of the class of 2025 for representing Attleboro High School's 156th graduating class with great distinction. The governing body of the Attleboro Schools conveys its best wishes for a future defined by happiness and success." The educator's certificate reads, "The Attleboro School Committee hereby commends," educator name, "for contributions to Attleboro High School's 156th graduating class. On behalf of the Attleboro community, the governing body of the Attleboro Schools conveys its sincere gratitude to you and your colleagues for engaging, challenging, and inspiring the Attleboro High School class of 2025 throughout their time in the Attleboro Public Schools."
Thank you Chairman. I would like to bring up Taya Torres, who would like to recognize Lindsay Nygaard and Susan Casey. So Taya, come on. And Lindsay and Sue. Lindsay, you can come over here because we're going to be presenting there. So Lindsay, here we go. Lindsay, you'll go first.
I'd like to honor Ms. Nygaard because of her commitment to her own practice and making me commit to my practice and how that inspired me. She taught me to be more insightful and thoughtful not only in creating and critiquing art, but as a person as well. And I would also like to honor Ms. Casey because she was a teacher that pushed me to pursue any ideas I had for my art. She was always super supportive of my work and encouraged me to experiment with new things and stay true to what I wanted to do and the person I wanted to be.
I also forgot a very important part, and that's reading about Taya. Taya is a talented artist, so you know what? Sue and Lindsay, if you can head over to the table right there, our school committee's going to give you, if you can go that way, all three of you can go that way while I read about Taya. Sorry. There we go. Taya is a talented artist who has taken nearly every art class offered at Attleboro High School, including AP Studio Art and Portfolio Art. She is involved with the Art Club and National Honor Society and loves photography. Taya is also involved with community service through the Leo Club and the Salvation Army, and she painted a mural at a local skate park in 10th grade. She will be studying fine arts and printmaking in Cornish College at the Arts in Seattle, Washington this fall. I would now like to welcome Kalani Woodson up to the podium, and she would be joined by Sue Shirk, John Farino, and Danielle Chinabong. Either way, kids come back, you guys come back then. Great job. Thank you both. Kalani is very involved in giving back to her communities as the president of Active Minds, which is our club that promotes mental health awareness, and as the secretary of our Black Student Alliance, which helps plan the multicultural fair. She also helps many of our multilingual learners with tutoring and learning conversational English, has a job, and volunteers at summer fashion shows in Boston. In the fall, she plans to volunteer for a year in Boston-area schools through the City Year Program while also taking college classes to pursue a psychology degree in the future.
I would like to honor Ms. Shirk for always offering a safe space to me whenever I needed it. She is one of the most compassionate and understanding adults in the building. Attleboro is very lucky to have her. I would like to honor Mr. Farino for all the advice he's given me since I transferred to AHS. He pushed my artistic abilities heavily and during his rambles gave me the best financial advice for moving through adulthood. I would like to honor Ms. B for her open-door policy, the food, and great advice, but also for the community I've connected to through her. She's taught me a lot about navigating through the world comfortably as myself, and she's someone I've looked up to, I look up to heavily. I appreciate the hard work and stress she continuously pushes through for these students at AHS.
Did you get a picture? That's okay. Mr. Hill, we good with pictures? Okay, got it done. I would like to bring up Jananjee Philammon, who will be recognizing Jennifer Espinal, Meredith Silva, and Julie Little. Jananjee is a self-described overachiever. Jananjee is the current vice president of the School Student Council, a third-place finisher at Skills USA last year in the Health Services Competition, secretary of our student leadership group, and three-year member of the Black Student Alliance, just to name a few. She challenged herself to classes of increased rigor throughout high school that includes AP and CTE classes. Enrolled in our medical assistant course, she intends to become a pediatrician in the future and plans to attend Assumption University.
I nominate Jennifer Espinal because she's made me grow as a person with her support and inspires me to always try my best. She was one of the few people who helped me prepare for success, especially through the medical field. I nominate Meredith Silva because of her positive attitude and her amazing advice. Her support made us have one of the strongest teacher-to-student relationships, and with her cheers, high school for me will be remembered in a great way. And finally, I would like to nominate Julie Little. With her guidance, I would have been able to say I committed to college. Not only is she supportive for that, but she's supportive for any big or small moments in life. Just as long as there are moments that need to be cherished, Mrs. Little will always be at the front of the line.
In the future, Sebastian plans to pursue computer engineering, which he describes as the best of both worlds because it blends both electrical and computer science components with the building of a computer. A student in the CIS program, he relishes working in tandem with our OIT department through the help desk. Consistency is the name of the game for Sebastian. He has been part-time employed at Market Basket since he was a sophomore and volunteers regularly at his church supporting their events and was part of our chess and clay clubs. Overall, Sebastian epitomizes compassion and organization and thrives when brightening others' days. Sweetheart in every sense of the word. In the fall, he will attend Bridgewater State University. Sebastian, you'd like Mr. Elliott, Meredith Silva, and Joanne Janowski, who's not here, but Matt Elliott and Meredith Silva.
So Mr. Elliott, when Mr. B left CIS during junior year, we all thought, can he be replaced? Mystery has truly been a lifesaver when it comes to preparing me for my career. And I also have nominated Meredith Silva. Not only did she make English my favorite class, but she was someone I could talk to on a personal level, and I thank her for that. And then I nominated Ms. Janowski, who was unable to attend, but she was an amazing guidance counselor, and she has always pushed me in the right direction, and I know she would do the same for my brother.
I would now like to bring up Genevieve Chase, who will be recognizing Chris Gannott, Patrice Brazza, and Katie McCarthy. Genevieve is an exceptional student and a valued asset to our music department. There is rarely a dull moment in Genevieve's schedule between marching band, jazz band, concert band, Girl Scouts, piano and clarinet lessons, swim lessons, drama club, acting and volunteering with the Triborough Youth Theater, and working as a lifeguard. Genevieve will be pursuing her passion for music education in the University of Massachusetts Amherst this fall, aspiring to become a music teacher, a music educator in the future. We hope that you come back to Attleboro High School and teach someday.
So first, I wanted to nominate Ms. Chris. Although I don't have many vivid memories of preschool, I remember having lots of fun and Ms. Chris being a very positive and kind teacher. Ms. Chris also helped me get into theater, which has become a huge part of my life. I thank you for teaching me to love school and for providing a strong foundation that has helped me get to where I am today. Second, I nominated Ms. Brazza. As my third-grade teacher, Ms. Brazza always found ways to challenge me in the classroom, fostering my love for learning and made me excited to come to school each day. She also impacted me beyond third grade. I met her back in kindergarten when she let me read a book to her class, and she continued to support me through fourth and fifth grade when I volunteered in her classroom. Ms. Brazza, thank you for always being a great teacher and helping to shape me into the learner and leader I am today. And then last, Mrs. McCarthy from high school. Throughout all four years of high school, Mrs. McCarthy has taught me a lot about both music and leadership, helping to grow my confidence and passion for music. Thank you for providing me unwavering support and guidance. You are the type of impactful music teacher I aspire to become one day.
Casper would like to be also to recognize Karen Pereira, Jennifer Espinal, and Julie Little. Casper is involved in almost every facet of student life at Attleboro High School, from being the student council president to representing our school at Massachusetts Boy State to being a founding member of a club called Future Focus for First-Generation College Applicants. He will earn the honors diploma at graduation after having taken numerous honors AP and dual enrollment courses during his time at Attleboro High School. He also recently earned his EMT certification. In the fall, Casper will study neuroscience at the University of Rochester.
First, I'd like to nominate Karen Pereira. Karen Pereira has been a strong mentor and a powerful role model who's shown me that it's truly possible to never give up. Next, I would like to nominate Jennifer Espinal. She's helped me ignite my passion for the medical field, and she's truly taught me, once again, anything can be possible. And finally, sadly, she could not be here tonight, but I would like to nominate Julie Little. She has taught me so much about college and has prepared me for my life post-Attleboro High School, and for that, I am forever grateful.
I would like to bring up Fatima Noor, who will be recognizing Jennifer Espinal, Katie Keane, and Sue Seinen. Fatima came to the U.S. just before the start of ninth grade and quickly became a standout student who earned a reputation for pushing herself academically into more and more challenging classes. As a result, she will earn the honors diploma at graduation. She is the president of Skills USA, treasurer of student council, and works part-time. She was chosen as the Attleboro High School recipient of the DAR's Good Citizen Award. She just recently won the Skills USA Presidential Volunteer Service Award and is one out of just seven students who won this out of over 2,000 competitors. Fatima plans to become a cardiologist and will study at the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Science this fall.
I would like to honor Ms. Espinal because she has been more than a teacher. She's been like a friend, always there to listen no matter what, and her support has helped me grow not just personally but academically, pushing me to believe in my abilities and strive for more than I thought I could achieve. Ms. Keane has been a constant source of support throughout all four years of my high school career, always offering a safe space where I felt heard and understood. Her guidance and encouragement helped me navigate both academic challenges and personal growth in ways I'll never forget. Ms. Seinen has been a steady and compassionate guide throughout my high school journey, always ready to listen, offer advice, and help me make sense of both academic doubts and personal struggles, making sure I never felt alone in the process.
I would now like to bring up Kylie Vieira, who will be recognizing Katie Scott and Melissa Blaine. Please. Kylie is the class of 2025 president. She is a best buddy, she is vice president of the Leo Club, she has accumulated more than 100 hours of community service, and the list goes on. She's an outstanding student who has the incredible gifts of both intelligence and determination. She pushes herself academically and will receive the honors diploma as a result of her hard work. She knows how to manage her time and organize herself to juggle all of the commitments with grace and enthusiasm. Next fall, Kylie will study business at UMass Amherst.
I would first like to honor Ms. Scott. Mrs. Scott not only sparked my passion and first love for mathematics, but she truly served as a supportive role model. She is the true definition of more than just a teacher, but her presence in my life taught me meaningful lessons and shaped me into the person I am today. Next, I would like to honor Ms. Blaze. Her support helped me navigate the most challenging year of high school while sustaining our relationship after having her as a teacher. Her unwavering commitment to her students constantly reminded me that her support went beyond her willingness to help, but her true interest in our lives outside of school.
I would now like to bring up Justin Galvin, who will be recognizing Pete Tarsey, Kelsey Justin is a phenomenal student who has challenged and excelled academically while at Attleboro High School. He is a top academic student in his class and an honors diploma recipient. He is a three-season athlete participating in football, winter track, and spring track throughout his four years. He was the winter-spring track captain this year. He is a member of National Honor Society, Math National Honor Society, and Spanish National Honor Society. He also works part-time as a lifeguard. Justin will be studying engineering at University of Virginia.
The first teacher I'd like to nominate is Mr. Tarsey. He has this incredible ability to explain complex topics in a way that makes them simple to understand, and he made me enjoy taking the AP Physics classes, which is something that's hard to do, so thank you for that. The second staff member I'd like to nominate is my guidance counselor, Ms. Buckman. I don't even know how many times I met with her this fall to talk about applying to colleges, and she helped me so much with that. I don't think I'd be in the position I am today if it wasn't for her, so thank you for that. And then the last staff member I'd like to nominate is Denise Fishback. For anyone who doesn't know her, she's one of the lunch ladies here at Attleboro. I wish I could nominate all of the lunch ladies. I think they're so incredible, and they deserve a lot more recognition than they get, and she's one of the happiest and nicest people I know. So thank you.
I would now like to bring up Rea Reyes, who will be recognizing Erin Belucci, Kristi DiStefano, and Caitlin Gibson. Rea is a remarkably driven and talented student whose academic excellence, leadership, and dedication to service truly sets her apart. From excelling in AP and criminal justice courses to volunteering with the police department and performing with the Ocean State Ballet Company and Rhode Island Philharmonic Youth Orchestra, Rea consistently demonstrates passion, discipline, and a commitment to making a difference. Rea will continue her education at Wellesley College while majoring in criminal justice in the fall.
I'd first like to nominate Mrs. Belucci. Mrs. Belucci has been the biggest, has been the biggest help in my academic.
How's that?
Hello?
Okay.
Mrs. Belucci has been the biggest help in my academic career and amazing person to get to know over the past few years that she's been at AHS. Not only does she radiate positivity every day, but she always responds to the hundreds of emails that I constantly send her, and I am forever grateful for that. I would next like to nominate Mrs. DiStefano. Mrs. DiStefano is not only a kind human being, but she's an amazing teacher. She is so patient and understanding of all her students, and she never failed to make my AP Lane class a great one. And finally, I would like to nominate Mrs. Gibson. Mrs. Gibson was my geometry teacher my freshman year, and I am so grateful that I met her when I did. She not only was a great teacher who taught me so much, but she helped me get acclimated to high school and set me up for a successful high school career.
I would now like to bring up Samari Lopez, who will be recognizing Nicole Cameron, Mrs. Everhart, and Lisa Crisifouli. Samari Lopez is an exceptional student whose academic excellence, leadership, and deep commitment to community service distinguish her as an outstanding individual. Her inspiring dedication to learning, meaningful extracurricular involvement, and unwavering drive to create positive change in her school and community is a testament to her character. Samari will continue her education at BCC in the fall to pursue a career in marketing.
This is to my fourth-grade teacher, someone who made me feel welcome from the moment I entered her class. Creating a refreshing atmosphere, her kindness and encouragement inspired me to develop a true love for learning. Ms. Everhart, my eighth-grade English teacher, taught me how to stand up for myself and be confident in my decisions. By believing in me and caring about my well-being, she inspired me to become a leader and advocate for others. Lastly, to Ms. Crisifouli, my marketing teacher, has taught me to persevere and rise above challenges, always encouraged me to stay true to my passion. Thank you for listening when I felt unheard and appreciating the person I've become.
I would now like to bring up Caroline Lynch Bartek, who will be recognizing Melissa Blaze, Lauren Teefentoller, and Richard Kelly. I don't see them in the screen. Caroline is a talented student and athlete. She resides in the top of her class while taking a schedule filled with advanced placement and honors classes. She is a record-breaking swimmer on our swim team and a valuable member of Attleboro High School's school community. Notably, Caroline is in the National Honor Society and best buddies president and class council treasurer. Caroline will continue her excellence at Providence College while studying nursing. Go Friars!
I've nominated Ms. Blaze. Although Ms. Blaze allegedly has a tough teaching style, she's equally acknowledged for her deep care and dedication to her students. This was something I experienced firsthand in her pre-calculus class. The passion she has for teaching is evident and is what made me look forward to her class each day. Next, I have honored Ms. Teefentoller. While many students are fortunate to have Ms. T for just one year, I had the privilege of learning from her for two. The time and energy she invests into her students is unparalleled. Whether it was offering help during her prep periods or staying after until 4:00 p.m., Ms. T always went above and beyond to ensure I understood the material. I would last like to honor Mr. Kelly, who is not here today, but when I entered Attleboro Public Schools in fifth grade, I was fortunate enough to have Mr. Kelly as both my math and social studies teacher. Mr. Kelly's teaching style allowed me to have fun while staying engaged in the content, and this is what ultimately sparked my love for math, which has remained with me ever since.
I would now like to bring up, I would now like to recognize Alexandra Meggensen, who will be recognizing Kathy Testa Adams, Deanna Wells Scott, and Uritsa Julian. Alex is a kind and compassionate member of the Attleboro High School community. Her genuine care for others is evident in the simplest interactions. We see it every day here at Attleboro High School. She is an Active Minds member, media coordinator for the GSA. Her passion for art is shown in her involvement in art club, portfolio art, and a graduating senior from the Graphic Design of Communication CTE Program. Alex will continue her education in graphic design at Champlain College.
First person I nominated was Ms. Adams. She was my English teacher during seventh and eighth grade, and I chose to honor her because she really encouraged me to read more, and she's just always been super supportive and kind throughout the two years that I had her. For Ms. Wells Scott, I chose her because she's been there since day one of high school for me. I can't thank her enough for her support, our back and forth. I can't thank her enough for her support, our back-and-forth about Star Wars versus Star Trek. There's obviously a superior one, but she would agree. And then for running GSA here at AHS. And then, lastly, but certainly not least, for Ms. Julian. She was my graphic design teacher sophomore and junior year, and I can't thank her enough for everything I've learned about graphic design and for helping me pursue my passion. Thank you.
I would now like to recognize Clyde DeSou Paris, DeSou Paris, who will be recognizing Danielle Silva, Corey Rug, and Emma Armfield. Clyde began his high school career in a small school in Australia, and then relocated to the United States following his freshman year. Clyde seamlessly made this transition and has demonstrated immense maturity, grace, and diligence while making it. He has immersed himself in our school culture and has embraced our core values. Clyde is a great student, but an even better person. He is kind, generous, and compassionate, and Attleboro High School is lucky to have him. Clyde has been accepted to an extremely competitive aviation program at Bridgewater State University and will continue his education there in the fall.
I would like to thank Ms. Silva. I don't think she realized how much her Algebra II honors class meant to me. She inspired my love for math, but, and then I realized it only gets harder. But, thank you. And I'd like to thank Corey Rug, I'm Mr. Rug. I love his robotics class. We have a lot of fun, and he has a lot of patience for me and my friends. But he inspired my love for creativity and just robotics in general, so I'd like to say thank you.
I would now like to bring up Zuri Ferguson, who will be recognizing Darby Sawyer and Anne Marie Bresnahan. Zuri is a phenomenal swimmer. She's also an amazing academic student. Swimming has been a passion and commitment for Zuri since she was young. Zuri has been a member of the varsity swim team for all four years. Her records have already beaten, have already surpassed the records we've had for years. She swims competitively for the Bluefish Swim Team, in which she spends extensive time training. Zuri competed already in the 2024 Olympics in Paris for Trinidad and Tobago. She will be swimming at the collegiate level and studying business, finance, and accounting at the University of Florida. Her kindness and humble characteristics do not go unnoticed here at Attleboro High School.
First, I would like to honor Ms. Sawyer. She's been there to support and guide me since my very first year in high school. She's always been my biggest cheerleader, both in and out of the pool, and I cannot imagine getting through the four years without her. And lastly, I'd like to honor Ms. Bresnahan. I couldn't imagine a better way to start my school career. Her kindness and patience was unmatched and will definitely leave a lasting impact on my life. Thank you.
I would now like to bring up Tyler Dunleavy, who will be recognizing Lauren Tiefentaller, David Seavey, and Stephanie Purchase. Tyler is a fantastic student and an exceptional athlete. He's an honors diploma recipient, and his commitment to his academics and personal goals is outstanding. He is a member of both the National Honor Society and Math Honor Society. Tyler is a phenomenal baseball player and is very dedicated to his Attleboro High School baseball team. He has been able to balance his commitments along with his part-time job. He will be playing baseball at the college, at college level, and studying physical therapy, exercise science at UMass Lowell.
First, I want to nominate Ms. Tiefentaller. Ms. T. is what a teacher should be. She takes her time to get to know her students and how to help, how to best help them succeed. Then, for Mr. Seavey, Mr. Seavey was the type of teacher where kids naturally gravitate towards him. His personality caused an infectious smile, making you forget all about the worries you have for the moment. And then for Ms. Purchase, or Ms. Purchase as I knew her as Ms. Harvey, was the reason I ever liked school in the first place. She was the first teacher that ever showed an interest in who I was outside of the classroom.
We have two students left, and one student might be coming in the door in the next minute, so I'm going to skip ahead and go to Shay Bowen, who isn't able to be here, but she felt it was important to recognize the teachers who aren't. Shay is a talented athlete, a gifted student, and also an extremely humble young woman. She is an amazing young lady who exemplifies leadership, resilience, hard work, and determination. She will continue her education at Northeastern University this fall. Shay wanted to recognize Danielle China Bone. She said, "Ms. Bone has encouraged me to be my unapologetic self and helped me better articulate my words." She also wanted to say thank you to John McCarthy. He has been a great teacher since my sophomore year, when I first had him, and I was lucky, perfect timing, and I was lucky enough to have him again my senior year. Mr. McCarthy has given me a tremendous amount with my writing, especially my college essay, which got me into my top school. So, Mr. McCarthy and Danielle China Bone, could you come up? Oh, Danielle. There we go. John, no, Rob, here. There we go. Mr. McCarthy. Good effort. Okay. It's coming in on two wheels. I love it. All right. Kaia Hannan will be joining me, will be joining me up at the podium, and she would like to recognize Jennifer Espinal and Jill Boyle. Kaia is an extraordinary, no, this is all you. I'm going to talk about you, and then you're going to talk about your teachers. Kaia is an extraordinary student and truly wonderful human being. Kaia is a four-year lacrosse player, a member of the Best Buddies Program, Leo Club, and numerous honor societies. Kaia is a natural helper. She is the first to lend a helping hand, never expecting anything in return. With everything she does, Kaia radiates kindness, maturity, intelligence, positivity, and compassion. Her participation in the medical CTE has only solidified her desire to pursue a career in the medical field as she plans, as she plans to attend Rivers University in the fall to study nursing.
I chose Ms. Espinal because she's had a meaningful impact on my journey as the one who first introduced me to the medical field and helped me discover my passion for nursing over these past four years. Her constant support has meant the world to me, and I truly wouldn't be where I am today without her. And then, Ms. Boyle, who couldn't come. I've chosen Ms. Boyle because I feel incredibly lucky, lucky to have had her as my guidance counselor throughout high school. She's done so much for me, and I'm truly grateful for the relationship we've formed and that I could always count on her to be there for me every step of the way.
Yes, we did win the lacrosse game. Looks like everyone's good with the photo. You go back that way. Good job, Kaia. I'd like to thank everyone. Tonight is a really special night for lots of different reasons, as I started by saying, seniors, you're, you're a really unusual class, and when I think of you all, the words that come to mind, and I'll probably talk more at graduation, are when I talk about confidence and kindness and collaboration. Like, you are a group that stands out, and the way you celebrate one another, the way you celebrate our school, and the way you were able to celebrate the educators that got you to this point, I thought was really meaningful. So, thank you to our seniors. And I'd really like to thank all the people who are sitting in the audience tonight. What you do every day is hard, and showing up for your students often is hard, and the hours that you put in are long and sometimes exhausting, and sometimes a day can come and go, and maybe there wasn't the ray of sunshine as that you received tonight, but yet you continue to persevere, you continue to show up for your students, and I couldn't be any prouder to be a part of Attleboro Public Schools, especially here at Attleboro High School. So, thank you for coming tonight and fitting us into your schedules. I believe Chairman Geddes, what we will do is --
So, hang tight for one moment. I do want to allow the committee an opportunity to, to provide any comments to the graduating class or to the educators that they've celebrated tonight? None? This is --
This is always my favorite committee meeting, because it's just so meaningful, seeing you at the end of your high school path, and I mean, we will see you in a couple of weeks at the very end. Congratulations to all of you. I wish you nothing but continued success in your next journeys in, in your educational careers and in life. So, thank you.
Ms. Sawyer?
Thank you, Chairman. My daughter graduated last year, but I've seen several teachers here that she loved appear on stage, and it's awesome. Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer. Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, I just want to say, you know, congratulations to the students who've been recognized and to all of the teachers and staff who've been recognized as well. You know, one of the things that I love about this is, is there is this recency bias. See, they're in high school, they've been in high school for four years, so very often it is the high school, because so much goes on in their life during those four years. But I love the fact that also our students get to pick teachers who've helped them when they were in elementary school and in middle school, and it just shows the journey that they take here, how important that is, and how much you mean to them, and they are your legacy. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Geddes. To echo what a lot of my colleagues have said tonight, oh, thank you very much, I wanted to thank all the educators that are here tonight, and thank you for doing what you do and inspiring our future and these students. And I wanted to thank the students for taking the time and energy and effort to recognize the educators that had such an impact on you. So, thank you to all.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Absolutely, thank you to the educators that are here tonight. Congratulations, seniors. Having been, I was fortunate enough to attend Scholarship Night last week. Samari, go Table 25. And I have to say, I was impressed, not just by the fact that the class of 2025 earned $308,000 in scholarship money to colleges and universities, but that those colleges and universities are nationwide. These are not just Massachusetts, UMass campuses. These were, we heard tonight, University of Virginia, University of Florida, and a variety of interests. Everything from STEM to education to business marketing. If I heard correctly, Casper is, has three majors next year, which is, which is truly remarkable. So, I truly felt that feeling of celebration and have been very impressed by the short time I've, I've gotten to know some of you. So, congratulations and best of luck on all of your future endeavors. We are going to recess in a moment to allow time for everyone to leave, but before we do, seniors, you are not the only one, you're not the only ones leaving Attleboro High School in a few weeks. So, we do want to take a moment to, this is the moment she's been dreading. We do want to take a moment to thank Principal Campbell. Principal Rooney took a lot of time to get this facility built, but it's obvious that you put a lot of work into building the community within it. So, we will always be very grateful for that. I want to invite the committee to offer any other thoughts and congratulations to Ms. Campbell. Mr. Larson?
Hate these things. When we opened this building a few years ago, and we had the opportunity to, for some of us to meet you for the first time and get to know you, it was a great marriage, and it's been a great marriage ever since. And that's the only way I can think of it, because we got to know you, and we got to know this wonderful building, and we got to know all the staff that now works here. Very sorry to see you go. Completely understandable, and I'd love to wish you the best of luck in, out on the island.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Known you for a long time, since my kids were in elementary school. You are the right choice for this building, to lead this building. You've made it what it is, and it will continue because of your work. Congratulations and good luck with everything in the future.
Anyone else? Mr. Domenici?
Thank you. Known each other for a while, and one of the things that I remember when, you know, you first came into Attleboro Public Schools as the principal of Attleboro High School, is how many people remembered you from your time here in Attleboro Public Schools, so much time, whether as teacher or principal. And as some of my colleagues have said, and I think Mr. Larson put it pretty well, couldn't have envisioned a better partner to open this school and give it its identity that it really, truly has had over these last three years and will continue to grow. Your legacy will always live on. You are always welcome here. We hope to see you at many events in our future, and best of luck in your next chapter of life.
I'd like to say thank you so much to the school committee. It's been an honor and a privilege coming back to Attleboro and opening this magnificent building. The support that I have felt as an educator and as a collaborator from all of you, I can never say thank you enough to Superintendent Sawyer and Assistant Superintendent Lori Regan, and your whole team. You know, it really has been an honor and a privilege being a part of this school community. Although I started in a different role here in 1992, I will always consider Attleboro Public Schools my, my home, my work home. And although I'm going to a home where I can help my parents in a community that is family-connected, I want you to know that Attleboro Public Schools is what I will always consider my home. So, again, it's been an honor and a privilege being a part of your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, and I think -- Thank you, Ms. Campbell, and I think, as evidenced by the head nodding that I saw out in the audience as the committee was providing comments, it's safe to say that although your time here was short, it will truly be felt for a very long time. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Chairman.
I kind of interjected there. I apologize.
No, again, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity tonight for our students to shine. Our students at Attleboro High School, I will say, are amazing human beings, and any opportunity that we can spotlight them and talk about what they bring to the world and will continue to bring to the world when they leave our doors in a couple of weeks here at Attleboro High School makes me proud, and I can't wait to see what our, our students do in the future. And again, all the educators who are sitting in our seats, I can't wait to hear about all the amazing things that you will continue to do here at Attleboro High School and Attleboro Public Schools. So, thank you, everybody, tonight for coming.
So, as I said, the committee will take a brief recess to allow everyone to finish celebrating together and leave the room, and then we will re-adjourn in about five minutes. We are recessed. I'll call the Attleboro Public School...or the Attleboro School Committee back to order. The next item on the agenda is our superintendent's report, and for that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Sawyer.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a brief update and then two requested actions for the committee this evening. First, obviously, as we spent some time on this evening already, we face the situation where we need to replace the principal at Attleboro High School. As I have already reported, we have a screening process in place and in action, and at this point, don't have any specific information that I can share with the committee. But the good news is that that process has not concluded, which is what the outcome would have been if, at this point, we had already decided that there was no action to be taken. So, that it is still ongoing is...should be interpreted as encouraging, but in this moment, nothing yet to report. Certainly will keep the committee informed as that proceeds. And then, as I notified the committee last week, Jeremy Gay has been selected by Norfolk Aggie as their next superintendent. This shouldn't come as a surprise to any of us. His critical work here in Attleboro certainly has earned him a chance at that job. It makes perfect sense that they would select him. We are proud and happy for him. But of course, that's another setback for us that we need to find a replacement for Mr. Gay. At this point, I wanted to inform the committee that both because of the amount of change that we're facing at the high school and the timing of this news, it is our intent to conduct the search for a replacement in the next year at hiring season in February. We believe that we can internally cover the CTE department for the following school year. We'll work with the high school to come up with an exact plan on how to accomplish that best. But, you know, we feel strongly that we'll have the maximum pool of recipients at that time of year, and we also think it's important that the next principal get to select the CTE director. And so, we think it's better to wait on this one. And we believe that we're in a position where all the good work that he's done will allow us to be able to hold together the four for one school year. In talking to Mr. Gay about this plan, which he endorses, I was very happy to hear him say that he believes that when we do post and do the search, that we will have strong applicants, that this is a job that will be attractive to people who are looking for this kind of work. And there are lots of people out in the regionals that are looking to make a move. So, we are optimistic that we will have a good choice to make when that time comes. But we do not believe, for the reasons I've stated, that this is the moment for that. So, certainly a lot of change coming for Attleboro High School, but we feel like we've got good things in place and in process and are optimistic that we're going to put ourselves in a position where next year is going to be a good year, regardless of the fact that we need to make these changes.
Any questions for Mr. Sawyer? So far?
Okay, then, you have before you a request for two motions.
So, pursuant to policy KHA for public solicitation in the schools, I will entertain a motion to allow the Global War on Terrorism Committee to directly solicit funds from our students and employees for the purpose of raising resources for the Global War on Terrorism monument that will be placed in Capron Park this fall to commemorate the brave men and women who served our country after the terrorist attacks on September 11th, 2001.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, or questions? Mr. Frappier?
Is this approval for a certain length of time, or is it indiscriminate?
So, the motion itself is indiscriminate, but I believe the fundraising timeline is for it to be completed by the end of June, if I'm not mistaken?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Larson?
I just acknowledge that I have already donated to the committee personally already.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Mr. Domenici?
On that note, so have I.
Let the record show that Ms. Johnson, Mr. Frappier, Ms. Sawyer, Ms. Porto, and Ms. Bennett also have. I feel badly that I missed the cookout yesterday, but I am planning to donate as well. Any other...Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the documents that was included with this was talking about the pennies for the Constitution fundraiser that they had about 100 years ago when they were looking for kids to chip in to save the USS Constitution. And at that time, the donation they were looking for, as mentioned in one of the flyers that's in the attachment, was for two and a half cents from each kid. So, I looked that up, and that's about 50 cents in today's money. So, kids of Attleboro, let's go, 50 cents. And if you have a little bit more, go for it. This is an entirely worthwhile cause and something I desperately look forward to seeing, to see that monument in its proper place with all the rest of them in Attleboro.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Second is the annual appointment to the Bye County Collaborative. Pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors are appointed annually. So, I will entertain a motion to appoint Superintendent David Sawyer as the Bye County Collaborative representative for the Attleboro Public School District for the 2025-2026 school year.
So, moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. It is my honor to serve you in that regard.
Thank you, Superintendent Sawyer.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, on May 6th, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees held their annual Day on the Hill as an advocacy effort for our state legislators. And I would like to invite Mr. Bennett to give a brief summary of our participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Mass Association of School Committees is an organization that most school committees in Attleboro belong to. And it is for the purposes of education for new school committee members and for building community among school committee members, and also, and most importantly, for effective advocacy. So, Chairman Geddes and I traveled into Boston a couple of weeks ago, and we had a chance to meet with Senator Feeney and Representative Adam Scanlon, who is the representative for Ward 3B and most of North Attleboro and portions of Mansfield. Representative Hawkins was unfortunately not available at the time, but we have spoken to him plenty of times. And so, the things that came up is that we spoke to Senator Feeney and Representative Scanlon about making sure that the Special Education Circuit Breaker Fund was appropriately funded this year. Last year, it was not appropriately funded, and not every school was able to receive their 75% reimbursement for qualified special education tuition. It is almost certainly going to be fully funded this year with enough money to retroactively pay any schools that were short-changed last year. I did find out from Mr. Frittato that we were not amongst those short-changed, so good news, we got paid last year. Bad news, they're not going to get us any more money out of it this year. We also worked...we talked about the retroactively adjusting the Chapter 78 formula. That's been a hot-button item for the Mass Association of School Committees for several years, to get that retroactively adjusted to include more than the 4.5% inflationary cap that was put on. Just in 2019, it was capped at 4.5%, just before we had about five years of rampant inflation. It's not likely that, from what I'm understanding, it's not likely that the state legislature is going to be able to do anything about that right away. But everyone understands that, you know, when inflation is in 7% or 8%, and we are at 4.5% cap on the Chapter 78, that certainly doesn't help. And one of the other things that came out of that is we're talking about some of the pain points, particularly with special education that we're having here in Attleboro. Senator Feeney was able to secure...and I know it's not game-changing money, but he was able to secure us $100,000 from the Fair Share Act. As a one-time earmark, that money can't be used for operational or recurring expenses or anything like that. But we did work with the administration, and the Briggs Corner School needs substantial accessibility renovations in order to be able to continue its job of hosting both the Abacus Administration and Project Connect. And Project Connect supports our youngest special education students because that's where they do all the screening for early learning centers. So, we know $100,000 doesn't move the needle, but it's something. And I think it just shows the commitment of our representative body and our state senator to doing whatever they can to help Attleboro out. So, it was a genuinely good day, and it's always worthwhile to see so many state school committee members from school committees all over the state coming together and working to get their ear of their representation. And another thing that's very quickly that came out of that is many school committee representatives that we spoke to didn't know who their state reps were, or knew who they were but hadn't met them or hadn't been able to schedule appointments or meetings with them. And I'm pleased to report that that is very, very easy for us to do. We have a very, like, just a responsive and responsible group of folks working for us at Beacon Hill. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Excuse me. Any questions or comments? Just to echo it, at one point, one of the other...one of the school committees from, I think, northwest of Boston made reference to our...they said, "We need to move this day up a few months because our legislators want to hear from us before May." And that's when I turned to Mr. Bennett and said, "Our legislators are probably sick of hearing from us by the time it gets to May." So, we are very fortunate and grateful to Representative Hawkins, Representative Scanlon, and Senator Feeney for all of their support. Next on the agenda are the minutes from our November 18th, 2024, and our April 28th, 2024. Next on the agenda are the minutes from our November 18th, 2024, and our April 28th, 2025 meetings. I will entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Domenici?
I just didn't know why we had November 18th on here.
My error.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda, we have two items. I am going to take them separately tonight. First, I will entertain a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $60 from the Box Tops for Education to Brennan Middle School. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For the second motion, I am going to abstain because of a potentially perceived conflict of interest, but I am comfortable facilitating the vote unless anyone on the committee objects. Seeing no objection, I will entertain a motion to accept a check in the amount of $1,095 from Bridgewater State University to cover student transportation costs to Bridgewater State University. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain, so the motion passes 801. Next item on the agenda are our subcommittee meetings. Buckle up, this is going to take a while, as we've got all four subcommittees. So first, we will start with the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, and for that, I will turn it over to Ms. Johnson to discuss the May 5th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll do my best to keep it as concise as possible. The Teaching and Learning Subcommittee met on Tuesday, May 6th, and the majority of our agenda was spent discussing certain aspects of the curriculum review cycle, as we often do. The curriculum review cycle is so important because it helps maintain and provide current curriculum for our students, keeping them competitive with their peers throughout the Commonwealth, while also balancing the cost and being fiscally responsible. All those who participate in this curriculum review cycle have always been so impressed with their dedication, their passion, and their interest. During this time, we got updates on some specific curriculum pilot updates. That included updates on the Grade 7, 8 ELA programs and the balances between the pros and the cons of Intu Reading and Amplify. They're still in this process, so nothing more specific to update there. Also included in the pilots are the health programs for the elementary school and the middle schools, reviews on QUAVE or HealthSmart, Catch HealthEd, and again, putting a lot of thought into these particular pilots and excited to see the outcomes here. But we're very excited to have our special guest, Katie Young, the K through 12 math and science coordinator. Wanted to make sure I got that correct. And she's spent time with the committee reviewing the iWriting math program that is going to be rolled out next year. This is something that they have, again, spent a lot of time and resources and efforts to make sure that we had the best program for our students. And we spent a lot of time discussing, reviewing the philosophy, the structure of this program, how it really focuses on the language of math and introducing algebraic concepts at the elementary school level, which will make this easier instruction down the road. There's a lot of great critical thinking, teaching students to debate, justify, discuss, all driving towards the goal of having our independent learners and developing those skills. Something else that is really exciting about this particular program, the diagnostic tools, the visualization of data, which is going to allow our educators to clearly gauge the learning of the individual students. And something also that's very exciting is there's going to be a real heavy focus on parent communication. There's going to be a lesson letter that goes out to the parents and an encouragement for that back-and-forth communication, especially for some of us, it may have been a while since we were last in a math classroom. So again, I just want to thank all who are participating in these pilot programs and all that volunteer, because sometimes there's so much interest that there's more volunteers, and there are slots for the pilot programs. And I just appreciate the engagement of all of our educators. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Can I steal that? Here's this.
Next is our Finance and Budget Subcommittee, and for that, I will turn it over to Mr. Frappier to report on the May 8th meeting.
All right, thank you, Chairman. So on the May 8th meeting, we had a lot of fun, as we usually do, but we went over some items. We did show that we were running a year-to-date transportation deficit. However, we were able to find that money in the salary line, so we are going to be okay with that. It was around $40,000 extra that we needed to close out the year for special education transportation. In other notes, we were informed that DESI made a judgment against us from a different, another local educational area down in Rochester. We have a student that's being split between the two districts, and we are found liable to cover the cost of $130,000 over the past three years. So that's been an ongoing issue that we are going to cover. The Staff Report has shown a surplus, which will be needed to cover our expenses that have not yet been encumbered. Our Insurance Report shows no spending, sorry, shows spending is in line with what we'd expected. The Grant Report also is in great shape, no major issues. The Revolving Report shows healthy balances in Abacus and School Lunch, and as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, Abacus will be staying at Briggs Corner and making improvements to the funding at the cost of around $125,000 to $150,000. So great news to Mr. Bennett, that is, $100,000 is great for an earmark, and that should help us get a long way with making that building ready for our students. The portable's failed, the roof is collapsing, and as also part of the spending, we're looking into buying a van for the School Lunch program. And our Utility Report does show an overage in heating costs, but we have enough of a surplus in the electricity savings this year to cover the deficit, and the heat has been turned off for the year, as mild as this week has been even. On the other note, we have a few items to bring forward tonight to the larger committee. Let me bring this over here. We're going to take these one at a time. The first motion that we approved at the Finance Committee was the renewal of the Sodexo contract at a 4% increase for the '25 slash '26 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions about that contract?
Mr. Bennett, in reviewing it, noticed there's a typo in one of the figures, so we'll communicate that with Ms. Nelson to get it corrected.
Excellent. All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And this time, I'll make an appropriate motion. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson, for saving me on that one. The next item we did was a motion to approve the renewal of the ED Listing Contract for the school year of '25-'26. Pardon me. And just for reference, Liston is our landscaping group that is responsible for the maintenance of the grounds and the athletic fields. So I'll now entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions about this contract?
Just very quickly, it was good timing with all of this because they've been up and at 'em from the moment we were a go to get them in place, and I had a constituent reach out. It just so happened to be asking me about the conditions in front of the high school because he's got family that lives in front of there, and within 24 hours, he was already responding, "Well, you guys work quick." So kudos to the Liston team for getting right on top of things. They've already made an immediate impact.
And actually, on that note, I forgot some commentary about that. It's the second year of the contract, and the administration has been happy with the work they're seeing, and the current work was around spring cleanup and grub issues. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? The ayes have it. The next motion we're bringing forward tonight is the renewal of the HL Bloom contract for the '25-'26 school year for a figure of $2.444,400. I'll now entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the Bloom contract? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on our list tonight, we have three rental agreements that we're going to go through. The first one is a motion to approve the rental agreement for Abacus for fiscal year '26. So I'll now, sorry, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So Abacus, that's been a long-time, ongoing lease. We have not increased their rental fee in some time. We did not feel that we needed to increase the rental fee, as they are making significant investment in the Briggs Corner School. Bless you. Any questions about the Abacus rental? All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next one we're bringing forward is we have two rental agreements with Smartz that we're going to break into separate items. The first one is a motion to approve the year-round rental agreement with Smartz for fiscal year '26.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. And so Smartz is a great program. A lot of our students in Attleboro take advantage of it, and they do a, I think, a four-week-long summer camp is what we are, oh, sorry, this is their year-round. This is for their year-round rental in the office space. It's mostly to source some paperwork and some other sundries throughout the year. They don't take up much space. And so, any questions on that rental agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And last but certainly not least, we have a motion to approve the summer rental agreement with Smartz, beginning on June 30th, 2025, ending August 5th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And this was what I referenced a few moments ago about the summer camp that they run in the district. Any questions on the Smartz? Yes?
It's a wonderful program, and everyone should look into it. My daughter had a wonderful time while she was going there, and the end-of-the-year presentation is spectacular. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Last but not least, I did forget one item before the motion, and I do apologize about that. There is no current updating on redistricting. Our vendor is still processing the information sent to them from the city. The city provided them with five to 10 years of projection for housing developments that is scheduled to build. We were expecting an update late last week, but we will find out from Ms. Perella at our next finance meeting in June. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Frappier. Just to go back, the DESI finding related to Rochester, I don't know if you, oh, Ms. Perella's already standing up to answer this question. My only question really was related to, is it, so was it a McKinney-Vento situation where the residency or?
So it was like a custodial situation where the student was living in Attleboro and attending Rochester, but we went and talked to our LEA assignment liaison, and they said that we're not fiscally responsible for prior to December 2024, so we're no longer responsible for that 130.
Okay.
Great news.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frappier.
No problem.
Next is our Policy and Personnel Subcommittee, and for that, I will turn it over to Mr. Storrs to discuss the May 10th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the committee met, and the first motion that we have coming forward, everything was voted out unanimously, this is to note the review date for the following policies, as these policies are already aligned with MASC or they meet the needs of the district. Policy BB, legal status. Policy BDB, school committee officers. BDE, subcommittees of the school committee. BDG, school attorney, there was just a very minor edit in that one, as well. BDFB, Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. BEC, executive sessions. We're removing a reference also to a policy that we do not have from our policy. BIAA, school committee transition protocol, and BID, school committee member compensation and expenses. Does anybody want me to take any of those motions separately? Seeing none, as these were voted out unanimously, I'll put them right up for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll note the review date for all of those. Our next section, these are, was, so minor edits, so that we are more aligned with MASC or for other reasons, I'll go through them. Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis sec. We added missing protected classes to align with MASC, and we fixed a link towards the bottom of the page. Policy AD, mission statements, so that it aligns with our strategic plan. Policy BA, school committee operational goals. We removed a reference to the city charter and added the definition of the SMART goals at the bottom, that's related within the policy. Policy BBBE, unexpired term fulfillment. We moved the city charter from the references to the sources, because that is where that policy comes from. Policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting, minor edits to define our process as MASC includes wording for school committees that have staggered elections, so where half their committee is one year, the next half is another year. We don't have that, so we resolved that through the wording. Policy BEDG, minutes to align with MASC, but also keep recording secretary, because that's what we have instead of clerk that MASC has. And Policy BG, policy development, minor edits so that we are fully aligned with MASC. Again, all these were voted out unanimously, so I'm going to put them up to a vote. Does anybody want me to take any of them separately? Seeing none, is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So next, the committee discussed policies and exhibits. BDFA, school councils. BDFA E1, school improvement plans. BDC, appointed committee officials. And BDFA E2, conduct the school council business. We're still working on those, so we tabled those for now, and we expect they'll come before the full committee over the summer. Next, the committee reviewed the annual edits to our handbooks, the 2025-2026 handbook. The members were provided this in the packets. Mrs. Rigan, if you would please, now generally, some of this has to do with the grading and access to honors in AP. There's more as well. Mrs. Rigan, if you'd please, just give a general summary of some of the changes.
Sure, Mr. Storrs. One of the major things was updating our communication process with our APS app and texting communication with families. The second update that we included was information about our Chromebooks and repair processes. And then finally, as you mentioned earlier, information about our grading practices at the high school and the adjustments made to the honor roll and the honor societies. Those were the three main areas.
Thank you. Does anybody have any specific questions regarding what was added? All right. So again, the Policy Subcommittee unanimously approved these edits and voted out to the full committee. As such, I'll put it up for full discussion. Does anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, the committee continued our discussion on the superintendent's evaluation process, not the evaluation itself, more focusing on the tool that the subcommittee members use. And Chairman Geddes was in attendance for this discussion. We looked at the resources that MASC has available for reference purposes. The superintendent is aware that we've been looking at a tool of this nature to help us in our responsibilities in the annual review of the superintendent. It was requested, and Mr. Geddes is going to facilitate this so that the superintendent's self-evaluation and the strategic goals are provided to the members as part of this process so that it'll assist us in what we have to do. The Subcommittee will be continuing our discussion into the summer with the hope of bringing something forward before the start of the next school year. Is there any further, anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. Just one piece, based on the timing, because we do need to complete the superintendent's evaluation prior to June 30th, which means that we would need to approve the evaluation at our June 16th meeting, which means I'm going to ask the members of the committee, I am going, as Mr. Storrs said, I will be sharing the rubric that DESI and MASC recommend, and will also include the district's strategic goals with which- and will also include the district's strategic goals with, with, with which Superintendent Sawyer shares. And so, I, and his self-evaluation. So Superintendent Sawyer, I'll ask that you provide that to me by May 31st to allow time for the executive board to, to review, or for me to share with the committee so that the committee can complete their individual evaluations for the executive board to compile, to provide for June 16th.
So noted.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, again, I just want to point out this is not changing the process. This is just whether or not there's a tool that we can come up with in the future, you know, hopefully before the next school year, that will help us throughout the year and help us at the end of the year when we have to go through this process. Wonderful. Yes, please.
Thank you. I just would like to quickly thank Mr. Sawyer for his willingness to entertain this prospect of, of looking at how he's evaluated. I know that there's contractual language specific to the superintendent's evaluation and, and I think it's very clear that we have reasonable people here, at least some of us. I might not be reasonable, but we'll, we'll do the best we can. But anyway, thank you very much for your willingness to entertain this prospect.
My pleasure to serve.
And I do want to say, Mr. Bennett is the one that brought this before the subcommittee and it was a good point because, you know, pretty much, we didn't really use a tool other than, you know, the, the weekly and the strategic goals that we have. Pretty much, it's aligned with that, but we're looking for a more formal tool of some sort. So, it was, it's, it was a good discussion and we'll continue it over the summer. And lastly, we unanimously voted out the department head job description, which was provided in the packet. I'll put that up for discussion. Does anybody have any questions or discussion regarding that job description? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. And Ms. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Storres. Adding cleanup is our Infrastructure and Facilities Subcommittee and for that, I will turn it over to Mr. Domenici to discuss the May 14th meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. We met this time around, we, we try to meet at a different school so that after the meeting, we can take a look at a lot of the good work that's been done. And this time around, we met at Hill Roberts. Joined by me were committee members, subcommittee members, Mr. Larson, Mr. Bennett, and Ms. Sawyer. I have several updates, I have no motions, but there's a lot of good updates. There's a couple we might not be happy about, but mostly good, so I'll go through them as quickly as I can and pause for questions. For the high school, we have a new controlling system for the lights in front of the building and pleased to report they're now working and working consistently. So, I know many of us have brought that up on more than one occasion, so we're very happy. It was a very diligent process and ultimately led us to, to replacing the controlling system. So that's good news. On the flip side, for the solar canopy, still not up and running, although the city has paid for the study that was required by National Grid, so we've made it through all these hurdles, but we are waiting for the equipment needed to prevent any excess energy created by the panels to be returned to the grid. So, there is a, a particular piece of equipment, we're in the process of obtaining this, we hope to have this in place and the panels operational by fall. And just as a note, the panels will produce slightly less than about 5% of our annual usage. And then, just some updates on the MSBA project for the high school. We returned, it was about $266 million project, we returned about $1.5 million on the project. I believe it was going back to the MSBA, I thought that was the requirement, but we were checking in to see exactly whether or not that gets to go back to the city or if we have to go back to the state. So, I don't know, Ms. Pronto or Mr. Fertato, if we have an update on that, we're still determining it, but we came in under budget, so that's, that's kind of the key point there. So, that's, that's the updates at the, at the high school. Another update at Thatcher, sad to report that the cooling system has failed. Just had a lot of work done with the train contract, train has come in, they've confirmed the system's not working. We've met the maintenance requirements required for any warranty work. However, train's going to come out to run tests to explain what happened, what caused the failure. And in the meantime, while that's going on, we'll be renting a cooler at a cost of about $15,000 a month for approximately four months to keep the school cool. Over the summer, the only program that's scheduled to use the building is the Triboro Youth Theater and they're there, but they're not there every day, so unfortunately, not the best update on Thatcher there. There's some other work that was done later on, we'll, we'll get to. For Coelho, some of the main items discussed, the cooling tower needs to be replaced. This was something that was brought up because we recently submitted the capital improvements project list. This item was not on there at the time, it's been determined that it needs to be added and it will be added to the list for 2026-2027 school year. The tower work will be done over the summer. And Coelho was one of the schools, along with Thatcher and the high school track that was reviewed by the city council and Mr. Rhodes from the Sun Chronicle, as they did last year, to, to talk about some of the capital improvements. They went all throughout the city, but for us, the note about Coelho, the leaking issues that were shown at that tour, they've still not been addressed. This is a substantial issue at that school. We're going to need to have an envelope study done to determine all the work that will need to be done there and I believe the administration's in the process of getting Russo Bar to come and do that study to identify the cause of the leaks and how best to address them. And then, lastly, in terms of the primary updates for the MSBA, at Brennan, there was a valve on the cooling system that failed. We're getting a replacement and we'll be repairing this sometime in either August or September. So before I move on to the other parts of my updates, does anybody have any questions about those items that were brought up? Mr. Chairman?
Just a, a quick comment. I, I believe most of the committee agrees with this premise, but from the city's perspective, any capital improvements that can be done to eventually help us with our operational costs are always most important to us. It's why we got into the train contract to help with utility costs and, and we, we've seen some of the benefits of that, so things like roof leaks that have to constantly be repaired and addressed and so on are, are always more problematic, so I hope that the, I hope that the city council can, can consider those. Thank you.
Sure. Next up, and this is what I call in the good news category and, you know, just an example of having this new high school and how much it saves us from a maintenance standpoint on many levels to allow us to go and do other work throughout the district. Mr. Parento from Sedexo gave us an update during the April vacation. So because of this new high school, we were able to, not only, we've been able to free up cash and resources to address other needed maintenance throughout the district. And I have a list of items and I'll try to be, you know, as quick as I can on them, but some of the, you know, Studley had a lot of work balancing HVAC systems, repairing air ducts, screening and refinishing the gym floor, replacing, replacing the sump pump on the lower level. Thatcher, there was, all the exhaust vents in the classrooms were cleaned and serviced, student lockers were now repaired, it's all complete. There were a lot of plumbing repairs in the classroom wing, clogged drains, et cetera, and, and even an elevator inspection. We did boiler repairs and floor repairs at Wamsutta. At Hill Roberts, we repaired and painted exterior doors and ceilings around the main entrance and receiving entrances and repaired roof drains around the sheds. And then even here at the high school, you know, changing filters, servicing HVAC units, faucet replacements, we put the championship banners up in the gym, created, built a stor, a storage shed and installed that for childcare and even did some painting in some of the office areas. And then, throughout the district, fire alarm testing, carpet cleaning and shampooing, floor scrubbing, thorough restroom and locker room cleaning and disinfecting, and as was mentioned by Mr. Frappier in the budget update, landscaping, spring cleanup had begun. So, it's quite an extensive list for a week off and it's just a testament to Mr. Parento and his, his crew, just how efficient and how, how excellent they are in getting a lot of that work done. So I wanted to just, you know, take a few minutes to note that and give them all the credit that they deserve. Speaking of capital improvements budget, we did submit our list. You know, many things have come off the list over the past few years. The train contract was very helpful in that, but that being said, there's still some items that have been on the list for, you know, anywhere from 12 to 15 years and, you know, Mark explained the whole process about funding the capital project. So we put them on our list and we prioritize them for each year that we would like to see things get done. So, you know, we talk about Thatcher and Coelho and they have roof needs, those are our two heaviest projects that we would like to get done, but it really depends on, you know, what the city's capacity is to be able to, to fund and to execute on some of these projects, whether it's, you know, sometimes it's free cash that gets freed up, sometimes it's bonding. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of points that go in there and we're not the only area of the city that requires capital improvements. We talked about whether or not the MSBA could consider taking up any of the bigger repairs. They won't consider funding any repairs on a building unless it's 20 years or older, but I, I do think that with Thatcher and Coelho, we're right on the precipice of that, if not a little over. So, there is a possibility, but they also just gave us this new high school recently, so I don't know where we would fall on the list. Obviously, we try to do these things dependent upon needs, et cetera, so. And then, lastly, we talked about the engineering studies for the parking lots at Thatcher and Hyman Fine and Studley. That all, the studies have been done and completed. The amount that's been approved by the city council for these projects will probably only cover the cost of Thatcher, which is the priority, because in it, you know, we have to, I think we were going to get somewhere in the vicinity of 30 parking spaces added in that space, which will really help with a lot of congestion in, in that elementary school. It's right in the middle of a neighborhood, so. So those are, those are updates there. Redistricting, again, the same update from Mr. Frappier. We were hoping to see if there was any news between the budget meeting and ours. There was some findings that were going to be presented by Ross Haber, so I think we'll probably get an update some point later in one of our other committee meetings, hopefully. And then the last thing before we took a tour of Hill Roberts and looked at all the new camera work and a lot of the new cleaning and painting that had been done, we talked about the operations director position and how we were, you know, asking about where we were in the hiring process and how that was going and, as it turns out, between then and now, we, we seem to have made a, a decision on that and a, and a very good one, in my opinion. So, Mr., if we can, since it's been announced, Mr. Fertato will, will stay on as the operations director while Ms. Peralta will take her place as the budget director as expected and so it's just a good benefit for all of us. Happy to hear that news. And with that, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Domenici. Next is, next item on the agenda is open forum. This is the time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Each open forum participant will be given three minutes to address the committee. Please come forward to the lectern and state your name and address for the record. Is the microphone on?
Testing.
Cool. Yep.
Joey Ford, 44 Ossama Street. This is week 16. You may be able to exterminate the grubs, like you guys did, but not my son and his needs. A while back, I attended a CPAC meeting. I didn't say much that night, but I remember a moment, just 30 seconds, when I got to talk to a young boy about the book that he was reading. It was about prehistoric predators. I asked him what he liked about it and in that tiny window of time, he lit up. He shared ideas, excitement, personality. That short exchange broke me open because in those 30 seconds with someone else's child, I experienced a level of communication that I've never been able to have with my own son, Loki. Loki is almost eight years old. He's bright, loving, thoughtful, and voiceless. He can't call me on the phone when I'm at work. He can't tell me that if he had a good day. He can't say, "Hi Daddy." He can't say anything, not because he doesn't have thoughts or feelings, but because he doesn't have a reliable way to express them. And what breaks my heart even more is knowing that the only thing standing between my son and a voice is a piece of technology that already exists, an updated iPad with, with a modern AAC app. That's all it takes, not a miracle, not a cure, just a tool. But our district has refused, again and again. They've decided somehow that this is too much to ask for and so, while other fathers get to call home and hear about dinosaurs or share bedtime stories, I sit in silence. I work long hours and I go home to a child who cannot tell me that he missed me, not because he doesn't, but because this district has wasted years of verbal development for my son. Now I want to say something directly, not with blame, but with the deepest respect, to the father whose child I spoke with that night, who I know is listening right now. You showed me something that I've never had. You, I saw a piece of the future that I dreamed for, for my son. You get to hear your son's voice even when you're not there. You get to know him, his thoughts, his questions, his pride in you. I don't begrudge you for that. I honor it and I want it too. I'm not asking for pity, I'm asking for justice, I'm asking for dignity, I'm asking for what your son already has, not just the right to speak, but the means. I will never stop until Loki has it, until he can call me from school and just say, "Hi Daddy." I will fight. But you, you can make it happen tomorrow and if you did, it wouldn't make you the villain who once said no, it would make you the father who understood, the man who remembered what it felt like to see his child come alive in a book and decided that every child deserves that same spark. You should be ashamed that the decorative lights were fixed before my son's voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? Seeing none, I will close open forum. This is a busy time of year, so we have a number of upcoming events. This Wednesday, May 21st, the Attleboro Technical Institute is hosting its graduation. I believe that's here in the Bray Auditorium.
It's here.
I believe it's here in the Bray Auditorium at 6:00, but we can confirm that. The school building committee is also meeting at 5:30 PM, so we'll get to celebrate the AHES lights again that night. That will be here at the Zito Conference Room. Thursday, May 22nd, is the Attleboro Community Academy graduation and I believe that, I can confirm that is here at 6:00 PM in the Bray Auditorium. As a reminder, next Monday, May 26th, there is no school because of the Memorial Day holiday. Our next full school committee meeting is Monday, January, nope, Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 6:30 PM. We will be back in the Zito Conference Room and we will be hearing both the strategic plan and the vision for the district over the next five years, so I encourage everyone to, to eagerly pay attention to that meeting. And then Friday, June 6th, is the Attleboro High School graduation. So, any other new business or updates for the committee tonight? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.